Audience or on council, take your cell phone, turn that device off or on mute. That would be appreciated. And I'd like to welcome everyone to Xenia City Council. Our regular meeting normally scheduled for June 12th is down tonight, June 9th, 2025. We appreciate those that are in attendance and watching tonight. We're gonna start with an invocation led by Mayor Urschel, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Carlos Walker. If you could all please rise.
Great, let's go ahead and pray. Father, thank you for today. Thank you for your creation, for the rain that we got earlier today, that helped the farmers and the crops that are growing, and for the sunshine that came out afterwards as well. And just for the blessings that we have to be in your creation. So we just pray tonight, God, to help us to lean on your wisdom, not our own, and help us to work for the best interest of our cities and not for ourselves, and to work for the interests of everyone in our city, all across the east, west, north, and south, Father. Praise things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'm gonna call our meeting to order and ask for city clerk for a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Here.
Councilman Reynolds?
Here.
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilman Probst?
Here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
Councilman Mr. Reese?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
I'd like to personally thank Mayor Urschel for running the last two council meetings in my absence and apologize for my workload that I had to miss that. So it's great to be back tonight. So thank you very much to everyone while I was gone. Our first item tonight is approval of minutes from our May 22nd, 2025 regular meeting. This time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written. So moved by Councilman Probst. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay, seconded by Councilman Walker. Do we have any corrections or additions? All right, seen none, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilman Mr. Reese?
Aye.
President Smith?
I'm staying.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We have no special presentation scheduled for tonight, so we'll move right into audience comments. This is the portion of our meeting dedicated to allow anyone in the public who would like to comment and come to the council to address any concerns. We do ask that you do come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Limit your comments three to four minutes.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is LaShonda Oatmeal. I reside at 320 North Columbus Street, Harenzina, Ohio. I have two questions. Neither one of them have anything to do with one another. My first question. Is there any way possible that, and forgive me for my ignorance, I don't know the technical term of this, but you know the little, I hate to even say the little, but the speedometer thing that tells you how fast you're going? And it's right there on Main Street, like by Burger King, across from Tim Hortons. Is there any way we can even consider putting something like this on Columbus Street, also known as 42, before the roundabout? The speed limit is 35.
Right.
On paper, on the sign. Watching the cars, it's 45, it's 55. There's double yellow lines. Sometimes they're being passed on a hot Friday night. If you guys are interested in the good show, come sit on the porch with us. There's no regard. Even if we can lower the speed limit to 25, because the way I see it is if the speed limit's 25 and you get pulled over doing 45, that money goes where? Here. So if there's something that we could possibly do, I'm even willing to get a petition signed by all of my neighbors. That's not a problem. My next question is, does the city still nuisance and obey properties? For example, if our law enforcement is coming out multiple times in a week, hell, even the grass looks horrible, so for that matter. But there are illegal activities, there's a lot going on. Do we still do that as a city? And I'm not saying, hey, I don't like Sarah, can you take her house? That's not at all what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, it not only cripples our law enforcement for things more important that they have going on to come out and answer these calls that they already know the answers for, but also it will give the residents of that particular street that I'm speaking of a sense of security. Because at this point, they're all scared, so they continue to call. But there's only so much that our law enforcement can do because they're working by the book. So they can't just go in the house and arrest everybody. And unfortunately, that's not the case, and I understand that. But I do thank you all for hearing me out. Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else care to come to the podium at this time? All right, thank you. So normally, in a council meeting, when a citizen addresses us, we try to keep it from being a Q and A debate type where we banner back and forth. So in light of tonight being a light agenda, I would just recommend if maybe you wanna stick around after the meeting, we can certainly try to answer some of these questions under council comments and reports and maybe get some feedback from you. Would you be okay with that? Okay, great.
I'm fine with that.
Awesome, and I thank you for speaking too, because it takes a lot for people to actually have the courage to come up, address the council. I wish we had more of it, to be honest with you. So we certainly appreciate you coming tonight.
I'm learning, sir, so again, please forgive me if I didn't.
No, you did great, thank you very much. Yeah, we appreciate that. All right, we're gonna move on to.
Can I ask one other person?
Yeah.
Hiba, you wanna come up and introduce yourself to the council?
Okay.
Just tell us what you've been doing this last year.
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name is Hiba Lixi. I used to serve on the X-Rex team, and I'm currently a rising junior at Cornell University, majoring in government anthropology. And what I've been doing this last year is really focusing on political science, public policy, learning a lot about kind of what goes on with the inner workings of a city. So that's actually what I'm doing right now this summer with Mr. Urschel. So I'm super excited about that, to kind of learn a little bit more about what happens and the intricacies of what goes on within a city and things that people, you know, don't really know about. I've been living in Xenia for my entire life, so I'm excited to kind of see like a little bit more about what really is happening, so.
Yeah, great, thanks, Hiba.
Yeah, thank you guys so much.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much, both of you, for attending tonight. We're gonna go into old business. Our first item's Resolution 2025-020, originally tabled March 27th for 2025. We do have a recommendation that this item remain tabled. Are we doing the same?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We're gonna move to new business then. Our first item in new business is ordinance 2025-14. This is an introduction tonight, levying assessments for the improvement of city streets and public ways by delighting thereof for the year 2025. So at this time, we'll turn the floor over to our acting city manager, Mr. Henry. Would you care to enlighten us, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. So this ordinance represents the last step of state law mandated actions that city council must take to implement a citywide street lighting assessment for the 2025 tax year. Step one was the lighting assessment process was the passage of the Resolution of Necessity on January 23rd, 2025. Step two was the adoption of the ordinance to proceed on April 24th, 2025. So this is the third and final step of the process, at fourth in the Ohio Revised Code. The cost for street lighting improvement project for 2025 is $243,000. So per state law, the city must pay 2% of the total cost, leaving an assessment amount of $238,140 to be divided amongst all properties in the city. Upon adoption of the ordinance and the filing of the same with the Green County Auditor, a street lighting assessment will be included on each lot and parcel within the city for the 2025 tax year, to be collected in 2026. In accordance with the Resolution of Necessity, the assessments will be levied by percentage of the tax value of the property assessed, and should be paid in two semi-annual installments. So for the 2025 tax year, the street lighting assessment will cost approximately $1 per month per $100,000 of property valuation. So this means that a resident with a home valued of $100,000 would pay approximately $12 per year. So each property owner will also have the option of paying the entire special assessment to the finance department within 30 days of the adoption of the ordinance. So this, today's just the introduction, so 30 days from now, we'll hopefully pass it. And then, so that, doing so, paying this all on finance of one lump sum at the start would allow you to sort of bypass any administrative fees that the county auditor would collect on the assessments. So that is all. I am happy to ask or answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Henry. Any questions?
I have one. So are we gonna like alert the public for that so that they have the chance to go out and pay that fee all at once? So that they're only paying roughly $24 a year then instead of having extra fees assessed to them?
It's something that you have to specially authorize in the Resolution of Necessity when you start the assessment process. Because most of these assessments are gonna be so small, we did put in your Resolution of Necessity that a property owner had that option to come in and pay. It does help them avoid those collection fees that the county, the county auditor has to put those on. It's required under state statute to do so, but it does save them that money.
I get that part. What I'm asking is, are we gonna alert the public so that they have the ability to actually pay that in that one lump sum? Put on like a water bill or something?
Oh, yes, I'm sure, I misunderstood your question.
We could put like a note that that's an option for the ratepayers. I don't know to what extent we, the council wants to do a push on that. I mean, it's, you're talking about, you know, on a $200,000 house, you're saving a buck. So, you know, so somebody may want, it's a 5% fee is what the county auditor charges. So it's not typically gonna be a significant amount, given the amount of the assessment. But if council wanted to put something out on social media, we can do that. We can certainly put something on the utility bill, you know, letting the public know that that's an option for them.
Yeah, and it's just a courtesy. I, my thoughts go to those that are having mortgages or second mortgages where the, where the tax are collected within the principle of their, of their payment. That's still an adjustment. And I think this courtesy that you're mentioning is gonna be huge for considering those people.
Sure. Any other feedback?
I agree as well. They would need to put some on social media, just letting the community know.
Good.
So, yeah, can I make a comment? So we have a few subdivisions that have current assessments.
Correct, you have four.
We have four. And so when we pass this, will this set up a new citywide district? And would repeal those four, or how would that work with those four?
The plan is, and we wanted to wait to see, of course, you don't wanna presume that council's going to pass this, but you have the right to introduce it, debate it, and pass it or deny it.
Right, right, right.
If council passes this on the 26th of June, then at your first meeting in July, we will introduce an ordinance to amend those four street lighting districts. They all currently run through 2027.
Correct, right.
So what we would do is end them as a tax share 2024.
Right.
So the money that's already been collected in those four districts for 2024, we would keep that September collection, we would get. But beginning then, January 1, with the tax share of 2025, the entire city will be under the same assessment.
Assessment.
So that's currently scheduled for your first meeting in July if council adopts this ordinance at your second meeting in June.
Okay, great.
Then I have another question.
Chance?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
So I believe this is for Ryan. So vacant lots are going to pay the lighting assessment too, or is it just residential?
Yes, because it's based on valuation. So regardless of what type of property is, we're looking at the value of that property and then assessing that portion, looking at the total value across the whole city. So yeah, vacant lots will be assessed. It'll be a very small portion, but yes, they will be assessed, a portion of that fee.
Thank you.
And part of the reason we only recommended a one-year assessment is the city's contract with Miami Valley Lighting expires at the end of this year. So next year, we'll probably come back with a recommendation for a five-year assessment, which is the max you could do. But it saves you having to go through this every, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll ask, anyone would care to introduce this?
I'll introduce.
Thank you. Introduced by Mayor Urschel. Our next item tonight, under new business, ordinance 2025-15, an introduction authorizing the sale of city-owned properties located at 607 South Monroe Street, 475 East Church, 476 East Second, 536 East Second, 656 East Second, and 105 Jackson Street. So at this time, we'll turn the floor back over to our acting city manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this ordinance would authorize the sale of six different properties that the city acquired through tax forfeitures in accordance with the city's home preservation program. Staff to use various marketing efforts to advertise these vacant properties to builders interested in building single-family owner-occupied homes in these vacant lots. And multiple proposals were received, and we had a very exhaustive, careful staff process where we internally vetted these properties, and we came up with the following list of, and the buyers. So Tribe Power LLC at 475th East Church Street for $1,000. G C Custom Homes for the following three properties, 536 East Second Street for $5,000, 105 Jackson Street for $3,000, 607 South Monroe Street for $3,000, and then Emery Builders for the last two properties, and 476 East Second Street and 66 East Second Street, each of those for $10,000. So this is a pretty good spread of different builders. We're really happy about that. We wanna make sure that Xenia is open and that we're kind of rolling out the red carpet. And it's really awesome and exciting to see this level of investment in these neighborhoods, something you probably wouldn't have seen five, 10 years ago. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Henry?
Yes. Yeah, I'm like you, very excited to see that these builders are gonna be backfilling some of these vacant lots and providing home. I know you're building one right now on West Second Street. And it's very much fitting inside the neighborhood too. So, you know, I know, living in that neighborhood, my neighbors are glad to see houses like this going up in the neighborhoods and backfilling some of these vacant lots. So kudos to the staff for working on this and getting this together.
Yeah, it's been, I think most of it's fallen on Mr. Baker over there. This has kind of fallen under his purview, but the entire development team has also kind of come up alongside him, and we're just really excited about this. It's good stuff.
All right, thanks, Mr. Henry. Thanks, Mr. Probst. Any other questions? Councilman Crawford?
Yeah, I was just curious, I saw the jump in the 10 and 10, those both being on the east side of Xenia. Just curious, I know this one's a larger lot, that makes sense, but just curious, how did we get to the 10? Because you're averaging pretty, you know, I don't know, you're averaging maybe $4,000 per lot.
So we did not set those numbers. It's basically, we just accepted offers, and those were the offers that staff agreed, I think, were the most attractive for a variety of options and reasons, so.
I was just curious how we got to the 10, why they would see that value so much different than some of these other lots?
We probably pay on average about $2,000 to get these tax foreclosed properties. Because to take it by forfeiture, we have to pay the court costs. We pay the court fees, we pay all that. So the prices that we're getting, we're definitely being made whole, which is good.
Let's make one comment. So, so the goal here isn't just a one-time net profit, really. We've, all these properties, we've been maintaining. And not getting any money back on that maintenance. And also, it's depressing, just like you mentioned earlier, is things that depress the neighborhood. These empty lots depress the neighborhood as well too, in terms of encouraging other folks to maintain their properties and do those types of things. So our real benefit, and Ryan, you guys, working with these builders and finding folks that actually want to build on these properties, is the real value here, both in terms of that neighborhood on that street and bringing a family in, you know, that's gonna be productive in the community. And the tax revenue downstream from that is gonna benefit everyone that does it, except for Xenia, because we don't collect much property taxes. But we'll benefit the school district and stuff, so that's a good thing too. So, but this, these are all really positive things. And we talked about getting the infill. And like you said, Dennis, there's quite a number of streets with vacant lots that have sat for decades that actually we're starting to see that infill building going on. It's just a great thing. So kudos to you guys too. I know it's been a painful process to get this all the way through the auditor and treasurer and sheriff and, you know, the courts and everything else, and none of those folks are us. Those are all county-level entities. But the folks have now, it's just a great synergy of their offices and allowing us to do this. And I'm assuming we've got other properties in the pipeline as well, that they're gonna be continuing on this way, so.
Wait, I haven't seen, I've only seen for 2025, so far, I've only seen about three foreclosures come through. We had an absolute slew last year and the year before.
Right.
So it may have been that there just weren't that many. And I would give a shout out to the county prosecutor's office.
Yes.
Since they brought the tax foreclosure process in-house.
Yes.
They have a dedicated prosecutor doing that. The process has been so smooth, it's been fantastic.
Right.
And while we're giving out shout outs, I have to give a shout out to our law director here. I'm sure she's loved every minute of looking at these agreements and all the back and forth, but she's been great to work with, and we just appreciate your hard work, so.
I might maybe tip you later.
Any other questions for Mr. Henry? All right, if not, I'll seek an introduction for ordinance 2025-15.
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Baker.
Thank you.
Mr. Reese, thank you. All right, our next item tonight in new business is Resolution 2025-029, authorizing the execution of a partnership agreement with Green County for fiscal year 2025, Community Housing Impact and Preservation chip program grant application and the administration thereof. We'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Henry.
So thank you, Mr. President. This is another really exciting program. So the Ohio Development Services Agency, or the Office of Community Development, has again provided the opportunity for cities and counties to jointly apply for and if successful implement the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, or CHIP funding. The city successfully received and executed grants back in 2019, 2021, 2023. Shows a long history of a county-city partnership. This go around, the county and the city would be eligible for $700,000 in CHIP funding for 2025 through this partnership agreement. So what we gain out of this partnership is an increased number of, or increase in funding available through us, to us. And also, it lessens the burden on staff as far as administrative. So Mr. Baker doesn't have to do quite the amount of work because we have him working for the housing preservation program, much of other stuff. So the county can go ahead and offset some of that. The county would be the lead applicant and implementer of the CHIP grant. And as part of the agreement, both the city and the county will agree to commit any applicable CDBG program income received as repayment to basically pay back past CHIP grants. So CDBG program income is derived from the repayment from past grants, recipients of CHIP, and similar programs like that. So basically, again, combining with the county gives us a rare win-win opportunity where we receive more funds and we don't have to do as much work. So, I mean, you really can't ask for more than that, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Henry. Questions for Mr. Henry regarding the CHIP program? Seen none. At this time, I'll introduce a motion for passage.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Crawford. Any further discussion? All right, get a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilman Mr. Reese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next, and our agenda is the appointed officials' reports. Thank you for being here tonight, folks. We'll go ahead and start with Mr. Duke.
Thank you, sir. I know we plan to discuss in more detail later this evening some of the actions been taken by the state just for the benefit of those who may be watching online, who might not read through the minutes of the work session later. The state is considering some initiatives that would have a significant impact to the city financially and principally, the one that concerns me the most at this moment is the potential elimination of inside millage. As I know, each of the council members know, the city actually has no outside or voted millage now after the failure of the renewal in October. We currently have 3.2 mills of inside millage that generate between 1.8 and 1.9. I think we've got about $1.9 million estimated as revenue in 2026 from that inside millage. Those are incredibly valuable dollars that provide funding for essential services. Just to give some context, that's about 10% of our public safety fund costs. So, and the bulk of that public safety expense is related to personnel. So you're looking at roughly somewhere in the neighborhood of about 12 full-time employees to try to make up that type of a difference, so.
Essential fire employees.
Yes, essential public safety employees. And that may even be on the low side, but that's, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood. So it's extremely important funding that we've relied on for many, many years. This is a change that the city really had very little ability to plan for. This is something that's kind of come out of left field that we weren't expecting. And so I'm hopeful that these changes aren't made at the state, but it's looking, looking like it's a very real possibility. So I know we'll have some discussions. There are different ways that we can potentially try to fill that gap, but they're, they're really a shifting of tax burden from property tax to income tax, that type of thing, or a significant cut in services, which I don't think that anybody in the public wants to see, to things like public safety. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but I think we're gonna get into some pretty significant detail here in the work session on that topic.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Duke? All right, we'll get back with you shortly here. All right, thank you. All right, Madam Law Director, what do you have for us tonight?
I have nothing for you, Steve.
Nothing tonight, all right.
We'll talk in the work session.
All right, and we'll take just a short recess after our regular meeting to go into the work session. All right, and then we'll ask our acting city manager tonight. Mr. Henry, what do you have for us tonight?
Got three brief things. So a reminder that city offices will be closed on June 19th in honor of the Juneteenth holiday. Secondly, tomorrow night is the city's Neighborhood Night Out event at the Xenia Station from 4:30 to 6:30. We encourage all residents to come out and learn more about the city departments, and also enjoy a free cookout dinner. And then lastly, invitation was sent out to members of council And then lastly, an invitation was sent out to members of council and city staff for an open house for a project that's been in the works for nearly a decade. The Apartments Over Xenia Shoe and Leather, known as the Shoemaker's Lofts, will be having an open house this Friday. It's for invitation-only for this Friday from 2 to 5. However, there will be a public open house on Saturday from 2 to 5. So it's a really cool endeavor and hopefully the first of many sort of apartment complexes on Main Street, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Henry. Any questions for him? All right, very good. We'll move into council comments and reports. We'll start with my left side, we'll start with Councilman Crawford. What do you have for us?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? All right. Councilman Reynolds?
I have two things. X Rec met last week, went really well, good meeting. This coming Saturday is the Xenia Fishing Derby at Shawnee. So if you want to show up at 9, volunteer and help out, that'd be great. Do you want to?
I'm already, they already are.
Good, 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 good. So yeah, if you want to show up, measure some fish, maybe detach them from the hook, not my area of expertise, but maybe some others. So yeah, if you want to show up. The next one is, I do have a question for the acting city manager. Do you know the date for the opening of the park at Shawnee? I see they're getting like very, very close. It looks great, the new slides, they got everything laid out, so.
I know, I had it on here somewhere. In fact, I think I've got it on my phone. So we're anticipating a June 19 completion date.
Okay.
Right around the corner.
June 19.
Juneteenth.
Yep, there you go.
It's the day you're off.
Hopefully. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. All right, we'll go to the right. Councilman Probst, what do you have tonight, of course?
The other week, I attended the viewing of a former council member, actor Lee Esprit. He was president of council before, and he served with me on my first term of council. He's a very, very giving man. He was, he would be sorely missed in the community, and I'll be fairly thankful for him, for his guidance and tutelage when I first started on council, so.
All right, thank you, Councilman Probst, and our hearts go out to the Esprit family. That was prior to my being on council, but I'm very familiar with the name and that family, so, thank you. All right, Councilman Walker, what do you have tonight for us?
I have nothing tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Seres, what would you like to add tonight?
I do want to let everyone know that I will be out of state the week of July the 6. Okay, so I will be missing council. So I'll make sure to tune in from wherever I'm at.
Very good. Will you get to see the fireworks show then?
Yeah, oh yeah, before I leave, oh yeah, going after that. I'm not leaving until the 5th. I want to be here for that, for, yes. So that's it, thank you.
Anything for us tonight?
No.
Thank you very much. All right, Mayor Herschel, what do you have? Oh, I'm sorry, I have to say.
One more second. Also, I want to give a congratulations to Councilman Walker. He has been selected as the recipient of the Ohio Chiefs Probation Officers Association Vince Potoleo Executive Leadership Award. Say that three times.
Oh, yes. Awesome. Wow. Fantastic. I saw you read, but.
Thank you very much.
I had to read it. It was a long title, so.
Very good.
All right, Mayor Herschel, what do you have for us?
Sure, so I'm just going to go back to the poll of comments and maybe just some thoughts on that. So I know that 42 coming into town is a state route, and there's issues with what we can and can't do without doing state studies on that, but we, it is within the city limits, and we do have posted speeds there, right? So I'm not asking for a resolution tonight, but potentially we could take a look at some things we could do. I know there's been times when we've had officers waiting at various locations through town where people have been speeding to start encouraging people, especially those that are commuting back and forth. And I do know from my own community, the right path, as folks have been there at those places, it's helped me slow down and other folks slow down as well, too. So I think we need to at least take a look at that to see if there's something we can do from an enforcement perspective on that. And then the issues in terms of, you know, a persistent, you know, residence that's causing problems over and over again in the community, and once again, we can't resolve anything tonight, but it might be good, Eric, if you guys could come back and talk about how, let us know how we address those types of things. And I know it's tough for a community member to come in, they don't know what the process is, they don't know what we can and can't do, they just know there's a problem, right? And if somebody is doing some things that are really disturbing a neighborhood, right? And when you heard the word fear, that's not healthy for anybody, right? And, you know, part of us living in a community means we're in tight quarters, and we need to be respecting each other. And sometimes people are doing behavior that, you know, if you're out in the township and you got 50 acres, who cares what you're doing out there? But, you know, if you're in a quarter-acre lot in the middle of the city, there's stuff that just will grind on people after a while. So did you, could you, before you leave tonight, pass on if you know the address that you're talking about? Once again, this isn't a formal report, but just to give us a sense of that. And Eric, I think it'd be good for us to kind of look at that and get back to the council about what do we do in situations like this? And then also, maybe what are some good ways for the neighbors to be able to keep the city in the loop on those kind of things, too? I know there's a lot of limitations, and maybe, Danette, you can tell us, too, about not tonight, but.
Yeah, we currently have a process in place, if you remember, 271A2, which we recently closed, we did a criminal nuisance abatement action on that property.
Right.
The process takes a while. The most important thing is whether or not this property is on the police's radar.
Right.
Once it hits the detective's radar, they are really good about monitoring it. What we found with a lot of times with properties, we have problems, they get some to letter. This is what we're monitoring your property for. If it continues, if you get criminally nuisance abated, your house gets boarded up for you. You're out, you're not allowed to get in it.
You're talking about if we go through that whole process?
Yes.
Correct.
But there are certain requirements, there are certain criminal charges we have to have in place and have resolved before we can proceed down that path.
Right.
So it's not something we can take care of overnight.
Sure.
But we do have a process in place, and we've used it. I mean, we used it on 271A2, so we've done it before, but there is a process in place. Any residents in that neighborhood that are having problems with a particular, I would encourage them to call, ask for Major Miller.
Okay.
He was our detective sergeant prior to being promoted, so he knows the process. He's very familiar with that, and he can explain it and walk them through it. For the speed, I don't know if we have a portable speed trailer. That may be an idea to put one out there on a temporary basis at least. Because it's a state route, even in the city, we would not be allowed to change that speed limit without state approval. They require a traffic study, so that, I mean, not saying that's not an option, but that's probably not a quick or cheap option.
Right.
But I noted we didn't have any of our PD here tonight, but I can say something to Chief Stewarts in the morning about getting one of those portable speed trailers out.
Sure, sure.
That might, you know, be something we can do right away that would help.
Sure. And driving by somebody who's been pulled over at the flashing lights is a warning to everybody, not just that an individual got pulled over, but the next 10, 15 people that are driving past him. Because you realize, you know, that could be me, right? Because I was speeding, too. And so now all of a sudden, I'm slowing down because the lights are going, and you see this happen two or three times, it makes you start to think, right? So I know we had issues with that on Lower Belrock coming into town, and multiple times we've had folks, you know, officers sitting there, Carlos, is that fair? You've seen him, right? And that really helped tone down the speeding in that area. So there may be some options like that we could look at, too, so.
All right, thank you. Hopefully that helps to some direction.
100%, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate your patience, too, on that process.
So let me just briefly go over some things that I was able to do as your mayor. We had Major Osborne's retirement, and we were able to do a proclamation him and decades of service here to the city, and very well-attended event, and just a man who just had a heart for the community, right? It's going to be sorely missed by the community, but it was a great way to honor him. We had three-year requirement, got promoted in-house, and it's been amazing over this last year, we've had a lot of transitions in leadership, but all the promotions we were able to do from within-house, and that speaks a lot to our fire department and how they work training up their personnel, that we can do all that from in-house instead of having them coming from outside. So kudos to all those folks and their families. I had an opportunity to go to our first community park program sponsored by AIA, so I went and volunteered all four days, and we had 75 kids come. We had 90 registered and 75 physically show up every day. It was a great turnout there, so kudos to AIA. They did a tremendous job running the camps. We still have three more camps coming up that we're sponsoring with the city. We have the last week of June, it's going to be at Lexington Park. Second week of July is going to be physically on the AIA campus, and then the last week of July is going to be at Spring Hill Park. So once again, I had a chance to talk to a lot of parents that were coming, and a number of, I say a good majority of the parents were repeats from last year, and they said it was a great time to be able to be in a community park and do this. There was a lot of families actually just walking to the park both ways. So it was a, once again, I'm really, really happy about that program and the partnership we have with AIA. They had eight staff members there, and the number of kids didn't faze them at all. They did a great job with that, so. I was able to go to the Green County Mayor's meeting this month that was hosted by our congressman's office, and once again, that's just a great connection with the other mayors and being able to share notes on what's going on in the communities. We had our first attendance at the Green County Development Commission, and Ryan and I were able to go to that. And once again, principally, it does two things. All of the townships, they have to pass their zoning through this. They don't approve it, but it's a review of that for consistency and a legal review before it goes back to township trustees. So that is of all of us too much, but it also allows us to tap into their staff, and they have six full-time staff that now Ryan can tap into, you know, from a zoning and planning perspective. So that was a great opportunity. And I just, also something else coming up, on the 19th of June, there's a community Juneteenth celebration, it's going to be 6 o'clock out at Lexington Park, and this will be our, I think, our fourth year of having this celebration. And once again, an opportunity to commemorate the date when slavery was finally abolished in its entirety after the Civil War, and also time to commemorate those that died either in slavery or those that died in the work to get rid of slavery. So they're going to have, it's a lot, a lot of activities are going on out there at the park. The group that's doing that is going to be serving a cookout dinner for folks, and there'll be games for kids, and so just a good community celebration. So I'll be on the 19th at 6 o'clock, and hope your folks can join us for that. And that's all I got.
Great, thank you for being so busy. All right, I have really nothing else to add other than to invite those that can to Xenia Station tomorrow for the Neighborhood Night Out, so I appreciate that. We are going to take just a five-minute recess, and we're going to go to the conference room next door for a brief work session, and then, pardon? Yeah, and then we're going to, yeah, and we are going to go into an executive session regarding personnel matters. We'll take that motion during the work session to do that. We don't plan to come back after the executive session for any legislative actions. So at this time, we will take a brief recess, and I'll see you in five minutes.